Our city council meeting prior to our getting started, we've got a special presentation that we're going to make and I would ask all of our FFA members to come up and Alexis Kurth, if you'll come up also, but let's have everybody come up. And Jacob?
He's not here?
He's running late? This isn't good. He's waiting for his partner. So he's here.
Here, just not here physically.
All right, so do you guys want to talk about anything else before we get it? All right, why don't we get everybody kind of all around here because we're like on TV and we want to make sure everybody gets to see us here. And Alexis, I'm going to turn over to you.
All right, we are from the Des Moines FFA chapter. We are the only urban FFA chapter in this state and next week is National FFA Week. So we will be doing a number of things. We will have an Instagram challenge for the students in the ag classes that we're in. We will be visiting with the Iowa State FFA advisors and we are also working right now to set up a service day with Meals from the Heartland. So next week, we just kind of celebrate what FFA is and what it stands for. Thank you.
Okay, give us a little, what do the FFA members do? Talk to us about that a little bit. Do you have a class that you participate in, is it a club?
Yeah, we, FFA members are required to be in a ag class, so any form of agricultural education such as the program that we're in. We have veterinary careers, we have food science of animal origin, we have environmental science and nursery and landscaping, as well as the introduction to horticulture and introduction to animal science course that the students are in that allows them to be in FFA.
So how many members do you have?
We have 140 students roughly in our class and that rounds out to about 70 to 80 of us are active FFA members.
Well, that's fabulous. And being the only one in the state, why then, the urban one, right?
Yes, the only urban one in the state.
All right. Whereas the future farmers of America and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction to purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our entire city council and all the citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim February 15th to 22nd, 2014, as FFA Week and hope that all of our citizens of the city of Des Moines will reach out to these young people and give them a lot of support. And I think I see our main supporter here, Jacob, do you have anything to say that you want to add to this?
I appreciate it.
All right, hang on a second. Jacob, you're on.
I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Hunter. I teach animal science for Central Campus High School. In addition to that role, I serve as a co-FFA advisor with my cohort Craig Nelson. We run the only urban ag program in the state and we're really proud of all of our students and their successes. If you'd like to reach out to us, we do, are available at Des Moines FFA through Central Campus, also on social media. Just find us at hashtag DSMFA. Thank you.
All right, so let's give these folks a great big hand. Let's clap now. So let's give these folks a great big hand. Hey Carl. Let's go ahead and do the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. Ready? All right, we're going to call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for February 10th, 2014. I'll ask the clerk, please to take role.
County?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two, approving the significant amendment to the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's 2013 Section 8 Administrative Plan, Chapter 5, to change the subsidy standards in conjunction with the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program. And this item was continued from January 27th, 2014. Board Communication Number 14-058. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a, yes?
Did that open to public?
Yes.
Sure.
Melissa Delisle. I'm gonna, I would just like to read what I have written. Once again, I would like to take advantage of this opportunity to voice my concerns regarding the changes being presented with my main one being the new wording being proposed for members of this community, including myself, to be required to have one bedroom for every two people regardless of their age, gender, and family status. I believed that this to be inappropriate and acceptable and one might quite possibly argue unconstitutional. This is not a required change by HUD, but is an only option proposed by the local housing authority. The attention seems to be not focused on the wording, but more focused on the hope in being able to help more families. That part I most certainly support. However, I believe strongly there has to be more than one option to choose from that doesn't compromise those currently on the program and new participants by having members of our community being forced to live in less than desirable situations. My desire is to speak for myself and possibly for those who might not be able to and to protect our rights as individuals in this community. I believe passing this proposed wording would be an injustice to those being affected. Therefore, I would request the council to not approve the new proposed wording and to seek more than this one option to vote on and provide the additional funds needed to allow for more vouchers that could be used to serve the additional families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is Doug in the room?
Doug is trying to print something off for council in the back. He had brought wrong materials, that's where I was in the back with him.
Okay, the question I guess I have that I need to have answered, I noticed that it says the agency's 2013 Section 8 Plan. I think we discussed the 14 and the 15 plan today. So I'm wondering what we're voting on.
Let me make sure.
You have a corrected roll call.
I'm sorry?
There should be a corrected roll call in your package.
We do have that, but that's still not the right one.
Oh, it doesn't say the right.
It's not what we discussed this morning.
No.
Doug, my quick question regarding this item two on our Municipal Housing Agency Agenda is it seemed like we had a discussion earlier in the day regarding the 2014 and 15 and this looks like it says 2013 plan. I would guess that 13 is over and we're in the 14 year, so what are we doing here?
It's actually, the significant amendment is to our current agency plan, which is FY13. The 2014 agency plan will be going out for review, or is out for review and comment right now. Will come to this board in March and will become effective July 1, I'm sorry, yeah, July 1 of 2014.
Okay.
Our agency plans are on fiscal years.
Okay, so we had some testimony just a second ago prior to your reentry that was, I guess, questioning some of the stuff we discussed at our meeting this morning. Does this pertain to that in the 2013 or is there the 14 plan going to be discussed at some other point which in fact then changes the policy?
The plan is, this is a significant amendment to 13 and it would carry over into the 14 plan. There are no other changes planned under this chapter for 2014. So whatever gets adopted in 13 gets put into the 14 plan.
So there's amendment to the 13 plan and will be put into the 14 plan and the 15 plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions?
I spoke about this a couple of times when it's been before us and I think that we've heard testimony, compelling testimony I might add, I think, and I think I've received letters that have been sent to all council members or emails. I have a framework for a proposal that's different than what Doug originally proposed and let me summarize it this way. I'd like, instead of making it effective on his timeframe, which is this spring and summer, is that we would make the policy effective 1-1 of 15 with a couple of exceptions. So that's 10 months out. So it gives us time to plan for it. The exceptions are that it would begin immediately for anybody that is moving residences. So if they're voluntarily changing where they live, they can find a place that meets the new standards. That everybody would be grandfathered in that's currently a part of this to accommodate those people that have leases or other problems and they would be grandfathered in for about a year and a half, I'm saying to 6-1 of 15. That's a shorter period than I said this morning because I'm proposing a third issue, which is that we direct Doug and the city manager with help from the legal team to create a hardship exemption. He would need to return with some kind of procedure for that and criteria, but I feel like the most compelling pieces of the opposition to this plan reside with gender issues within families. You know, kids that are 14, 15, a boy and a girl, that the policy would require them living together. There's some other, you know, particular things that I think would affect a small percentage of the 3,300 families that are part of the Section 8 program. You know, so I hate to design a whole system around a small few number of people, but I do think that there are a few exemptions and if we directed when he returned that the housing director could approve under this procedure a certain number per year hardship cases, it would still allow us to get to our goal, which is serving more people, but it would acknowledge that there are some difficult situations that we wouldn't want to put some families in and that we would kind of create a hardship. I'd say the hardship policy would have to come back to us. I don't want to design it or propose anything today that would be final, but that would be my proposal. I think it gets us to saving money quickly so we're able to help more people, but it also gives a little carve out to some unique situations, some of which our speaker the last couple of weeks, this morning and today, has spoken about.
Is there any reason we couldn't continue this till the next council meeting so that what Councilman Coleman has articulated could be put into writing?
What's the timeline, Doug?
This isn't good enough?
At least you can read it.
I support that, Skip, if it meets everybody's timeframe.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We're open ended, it's just whenever you want to make the policy decision.
I'll move to continue item two from the Municipal Housing Agency to the next council meeting.
Can I add this to?
City manager and city able to sort of hand Doug to work on language that?
Language in a roll call?
And I would ask that the discussion around hardship, if you could give us what would be some of the parameters as individuals that would most likely meet the definition of hardship?
Are we voting?
Yep. Seven yes?
All right, thank you for the discussion, everybody, and I want to thank our speaker for your continued interest in this item. Appreciate it. Could we have a motion to adjourn, please, as Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. We will move straight to our Des Moines City Council meeting. We already recognize our FFA Week. Prior to our starting the council meeting tonight, we're going to have a message from our new city council member, Bill Gray, and we would ask that anybody who participates would like to, to stand at this time, please.
Well, things to remember. The value of time, the success of perseverance, the pleasure of working, the dignity of simplicity, the worth of character, the power of kindness, the influence of example, the obligation of duty, the wisdom of economy, the virtue of patience, the improvement of talent, and the joy of origination. Thank you.
I will ask the clerk to quickly take role, please.
County?
Present.
Coleman? It's here. Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Boss?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
All right, we now sit in city council meeting. I quickly would like to do something. In this hearing, we have two members of our city council who have achieved some significant goals. First of all, we have our own council member, Bob Mahaffey. And Bob, if you would step up here, I have a recognition of service. He has, this is his tenure pin.
Wow.
And for Christine Hensley, Chris, if you will please come up, let's give Chris a great big hand for 20 years of service. All right. Congratulations to both of you and for your continued service on this council.
Thank you.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Could we have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Item three is approving a consent agenda tonight. These are items three through 29. These are routine items and we will be enacting them as one roll call vote without separate discussion unless somebody either from the audience or a member of the council pulls an item for further discussion or clarification and then those items will be considered separately. So this evening, item five, council members, County and Moore vote no. Item 14, council member Gray wishes to speak. Item 19, council member Hensley abstains. And item 25, council member Moore wishes to speak. We would ask that everybody turn off their cell phones and, or at least put them on silent so that we can move this meeting ahead without disruption. Are there any other items that anybody would like to pull besides 14 and 25? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Item passes. That moves us directly to item 14. Item 14 is approving, it's under the Boards and Commission Neighborhoods, it's approving recommendation of council member Bill Gray for the appointment of Cecilia Ibsen to the Housing Services Board, seat four, for a three-year term commencing June 30 of '12 and to expire June 30 of '15. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. As being the rookie member here, this is kind of one of my great pleasures being, this is the first appointment that I'm going to have for any Board or Commission for the city and I want to thank Chris Coleman for the 12 years that I've served on the Board of Adjustment. It was supposed to be 10. 10 years. But it is such a great opportunity for people to serve this city and do this in the commissions and get things going and Cece is one great lady. I'm very happy to have her on and I know she's going to do a great job. So that's what I wanted to say and so I move that we accept her.
All right, item 25, that's approving the receipt of the 2013 Polk County Assessor's Annual Report. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the work that the county assessors put together on this, but in our pack, the council receives on page six, it's very interesting here. It's called Property Tax Shift and it's the years 2007 through 2012 and they have a comparison between a residence that's assessed at $200,000 and a business that's assessed at $200,000. And I just wanted to point out, and I hope somebody take a look at this because that commercial property valued at $200,000 in five years raised $72 in property tax, but the residential property valued at $200,000 increased $841. And now we have the state giving them a rollback of 10%. I believe there's going to be more than that in the future and I just don't see where this issue of being out of balance is coming from, especially when one type of property is income property. And with that, I'll move 25.
Mr. Moore, I do not disagree. All right, takes us to item 30, which is ordinance's second consideration. This item is to rezone 4140 East 14th Street, CNS Properties, 2LC from C2, general retail and highway oriented commercial to limited M1, light industrial to allow expansion of a legal non-conforming light industrial use with outdoor storage. Council Communication Number 14-59. A and that is the final consideration of the ordinance above and the waiver is requested by the applicant and this requires six votes. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none? Any discussion with the council or a motion?
Seeing no discussion, I'll move item 30 and 30A.
Seven yes?
All right, item 30 and 30A is moved and that A is the final consideration, so this item moves forward. Item 31 is a communication from Claudia Addy of 3818 Pleasant Street to speak regarding new requests for signage in the city as it relates to streetscapes and grandfathering. Is Claudia in the room? There she is.
I forgot my phone. Hi, I'm Claudia Addy, 3818 Pleasant Street. And this is regarding, we've been having a lot of neighborhood meetings regarding signage and our streetscapes, including overhead lines, signs, the whole ball of wax. And so we're trying to pinpoint things that would be cheap, if not free, easy, and make our streetscapes look a little better. We're going to have ongoing meetings about this. I guess what spurred it was the channel sign in front of the playhouse, but it's led us all to think about signage in town and the overhead power lines. And so we suggested a moratorium on business signs, on okaying, whatever the okay process is, on signs, 18 footer billboards and whatnot, as a first step. Or a moratorium, or perhaps a limitation on the length of time that the sign could, would be in place. Not to say that it wouldn't be able to be there longer, but not into perpetuity. And so we don't saddle other generations with these signs that, you know, sometimes are grandfathered in, whatever. So we'd like maybe a limitation on the number of years a sign could be okayed for, something to that effect as a first step, or a moratorium completely. Thank you.
All right, could we have a motion to receive and file those comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file those comments and I believe we've got a committee that's already set up that's looking at signs and would ask that the comments be incorporated or passed on to them.
Mrs. Hensley, just to clarify, is it your intention that we report back on this or just envelop it into the work that's ongoing or?
My intention would be just to incorporate it into the work that's currently ongoing right now with the meetings.
Okay.
Because that ultimately will come back to the full council.
Is this a, what kind of a committee is it, Mr. Manager?
I thought it was the committee that was set up as a result of?
Jason Pulliam, I think. I heard here some time ago about signs along Merle Hay Road and I know that Mike Ludwig and Phil and others are working on that with neighbors and Jason and that group.
Okay, are there any council members on that?
Yes. I'm there.
Bill is.
Yeah, because I've been on that side preaching the same thing and I'm glad to be on that committee. And we're starting out, you know, this is an exceptionally large bunch of work that has to get done. So we've identified the Merle Hay corridor, Merle So we've identified the Merle Hay Corridor, Merle Hay Visual Improvement Committee is what we're trying to do, is start with that, start with the signs that we think, I'll use this phrase, low-hanging fruit, which would be the 17-foot pole signs. We understand there's a lot more that's involved there, but we've only had a couple meetings. We need to start picking it up a little bit more so, Rick, we can get a little bit more push, but we do need to do something. You know, we keep saying this, that we're going to get something done, and I drive that Merle Hay road all the time, and it is just visual clutter. It, you know, I know it's going to be tough with billboard signs, but we've got these pole signs all over the city, and we really need to clean ourselves up. That's, Claudia, I'm with you, and I saw Joanne out there too, so we're, I want to get this thing going. We need some push to keep the committee going and get some more citizen involvement.
And I would just ask that we also have this come back as a council workshop item, because I know there's a lot of interest, and I think, going back to Bill's comments, there's the different buckets out there. We're talking about utility poles, we're talking about pole signs, we're talking about billboards.
Correct.
And so, you know, it's going to take a while to get through all of those, and I know that there has been a lot of discussion as a result of the community playhouse, but I think we've already got an appropriate group that's been set up to look at this and would ask that your comments be incorporated into that.
Okay. I attended the gr, well, this is, if you're talking about the meeting that we were at the other night, this isn't really an appropriate group. I mean, it's a, it's a group of citizens, and, I mean, is that what she's talking about, Bill, the meeting that we were at the other night?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Christine hit it right on the head. We've got three buckets that we've got to go after.
Yeah.
And each one's going to be a little bit more difficult going to the next level. So, the idea here is to get the low-hanging fruit. Where can we, we can make the biggest impact in the shortest amount of time and not cause as much disruption as we can in the business community.
Yeah, that's exactly it, and that's why we're doing proposals that would be free or cheap, and we're bringing them forward to you guys, because these are coming out of these meetings and individuals who attend the meetings, and hopefully then we can get a little more impetus going on this. But to have a moratorium or a limitation, whatever would be appropriate for this kind of thing, so that we don't saddle people with the same signs and they have to go, no, that was grandfathered in in 2014.
Claudia, are you talking about, to me, it sounds like you're talking about a group of people that are different from the committee that's meeting.
No, I don't think so. It's a Merle Hay, but people from all over the city are attending. So we had some Merle Hay people, we had some people from Southeast 14th, north of Grand Neighborhood, and Beaverdale, the Beaver area. I can't remember where else, but we met at Northwest Community Center for the first time, and it was a couple of weeks ago.
To speak with what Christine is saying, that was, what we had at Northwest Community Center was an informational meeting.
Yeah.
But the actual committee that's doing the work for the city council is the Merle Hay Visual...
Yeah, that Merle Hay guy.
Right.
Okay, okay. So it is a little bit different. That was a city.
All right.
Yeah, that was...
Thank you.
So, excuse me, when you say "we," I'm a little confused who "we" is.
Just random citizens of Des Moines.
An ad hoc committee, or?
No, just random citizens. I can get you a list of people's names if you want them the next time.
Okay.
So my motion was to refer it back to City Manager's Office for incorporation with the committee to take these comments into account and also get it on a workshop council agenda.
And I will also, just as a matter of historical perspective, I know that Mr. Coleman and Mr. Vlasis and I, and I think Bob, after Tom left the council, we attended almost two years' worth of meetings talking about signage around the city, and I'm hopeful that maybe we can get some of that longer perspective engaged in this as well. Because I think that there's been considerable work done on this up to this point, we just haven't apparently moved it forward in a...
You know, Mayor, right. Tying your comments to what Bill has said and what others have come to say today, that the focus on some of these, like the pole signs, one of the reasons why we haven't done anything is we've been told to amortize some of these codes and all that, it takes decades to, you know, to really have much impact, which, you know, is probably true. I think our counselor would tell us it probably is true. Fact is, had we done it a decade ago, we'd be a decade closer to having it done, and I would rather take some small steps right away and start moving forward and kind of setting a precedent for this, pole signs and other things, on some of our highly-traveled corridors that were built with a philosophy that's different than what, you know, the council today has. And let's begin, even if the, even if the impact is out years and years, if we wait five years to do it, it's still going to be out years and years. And I'm talking about some of these pole signs and other things that are, that are, you know, by our businesses, Merle Hay Road, East 14th Street, other places. I think some of the other things that have been talked about are a little bit more difficult to deal with, and we've, you know, we've worked on, you know, billboard stuff and other things for a long time, on and off, and, you know, I think, and we've continually made changes to that. You know, that, to me, has to keep playing out, and we'll see how the current ordinance works in the agreement that we have to switch out some of these digital billboards and others. But we're in the middle of that playing out. Let's at least start the other.
Correct. I think it's a great idea. One of the things, when I was serving on the Board of Adjustment, was the fact that the city ordinance allows a minimum of 17-foot pole sign. They'll tell you that right there at Permit and Development. So if that's what I'm greeted with when I, when I go in and apply for a sign, what do you think I'm going to do? I'm going to take the 17-foot, then if I want to make it higher, just get an exception. That's where we need to start to focus. We got to, we got to ratchet that down so that we have some, you know, we've tried and tried and tried to convince some of these people that you don't need 17-foot, can you drop it down? Well, most of them are pretty good about doing it, but we don't need to make the first thing out of the chute, a 17-foot pole sign. So, thank you, Chris. That's right.
I know Community Development has worked on this, because I know CVS came out with a request for a pole sign, and Mike Ludwig, and it worked with him, Dylan C., on the one in Heidel Park especially, that they lowered it quite a bit up there.
All right. I think we've got a motion.
We do.
Seven yes.
All right. Takes us to item 32, from Christopher Buchanan, Doing Businesses, Scotty's Body Shop, regarding request to purchase city-owned park property at 504 Southeast 6th Street. Is Christopher in the audience?
Yes.
Would you like to step up and present your concern or interest or whatever?
Sure. I currently own Scotty's Body Shop that's over here on 1430 Lennon Street, and what I'm wanting to do is acquire the property that's located at 504 Southeast 6th Street so that I may relocate to that property.
Okay. Somebody have any questions?
Is that what we call Allen Park, or?
Yes.
Yep.
What's the reason for relocating?
It's vacated. Right now, we have a letter of intent to purchase the property that we're currently in, and we're thinking about selling it, and we just are planning on, once we acquire the property, to move there, but this is looking about six months to a year away.
Have you looked in other areas of the city, like?
Yes.
North of where your shop is, there at University and the river?
Yes.
And there's nothing up?
I have a location that's over on University right now, and it would just be not smart to move so close to my other location. So I wanted to get something that was, you know, in the downtown area so we can, so we can serve the community that we're serving now.
We want you to stay downtown.
Thank you. We want to, I want to stay downtown. And we've looked, but there's just nothing available out there. So we had found this location, which is currently M1 zoned.
I have a question. I don't know whether it's for Ben or not, but was that the Neighborhood Gardens location where they had?
Yes.
Are they still active?
Attorney County Members of the Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Director of Parks and Recreation. We do, since 2010, have 70 plots with 42 gardeners at that site.
Ben, would there be an alternate site that you could move that garden to that's within a close proximity?
Right now, we are looking at that with our City Real Estate Division. There is a couple of spaces or parcels of land in the immediate vicinity that would meet our need. We just have to work with City Resources and make sure that our park board have a process, if you so chose to give them a process.
I would think we ought to look at maybe continuing this with what they're doing, trying to find another location, because that is used, I know, within the last few years, very heavily for the neighborhoods down there, people who have gardens.
Is it, is it a problem to refer it to the city manager to begin both the disposal or the selling of the property and a relocation of that service?
I'm going to ask for his comment on this.
Yeah.
Looks like he's got a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Ben is right. There is property that's, that's close to this that, that would be appropriate for the community gardens. I'm aware, and I think our staff is aware, the community gardens, and you're pointing out, Mr. Mayor, if it's a very popular, good program, so we don't want to eliminate that program. It would be a question of whether we can successfully move it to a nearby location. If you act on it here, you're simply referring it back to us to study. We'd have to bring it back to you for further examination, and I would urge you to refer it to us so we could do that work, work with Mr. Buchanan as well in terms of his relocation needs. So, we understand the value and the virtue of the community gardens and want to make sure that gets addressed appropriately.
Rick, I think another issue with this is that will be a gateway to the market district, and I think that this needs to go by the HEV also for their input into this.
We can, we can do that, Mr. Moore.
Should I move to receive, file, and refer to the manager's office?
That would be very much appreciated.
So moved?
That'd be perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
And looking at the options and working directly with Scotty's as well as the individual garden.
We'll continue to work with, with Mr. Buchanan.
Keeping in mind that Scotty's is a tax-paying entity, and we want to keep him downtown.
Thank you.
Right?
Yes, we are.
I've used your services, I'm sorry to say.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to say.
Seven yes.
All Steve's fault.
But you were very satisfied with him, right?
Very.
Great job, huh?
All right. 33, from Marty Mock of 2701 Arthur Avenue, to speak regarding the Airport Authority and the Fire Public Safety Protection.
Good evening, Mayor Menendez and City Council. Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. I began hearing some emails from neighborhood leaders in regard to issues of public safety with the airport, as Des Moines Register started doing different articles as we're looking at budget and planning process. And I thought that I would bring some of the concerns that I have heard and share with you in regard to some of the issues that they've brought to me by way of going to Des Moines Neighbors. Basically, it comes down to two different areas. One is the concern in regard to the fire safety and the loss of the National, Air National Guard, and what's going to be done with fire safety. I did attend this morning the meeting where Mr. Hansel did give the report. I've talked to the fire chief here in the city of Des Moines, and there's great concern, ongoing concern about the level of fire service and even more so maybe the medic service that's going to be provided to the airport with the loss of the Air National Guard. And I think that Chief DeKeff did very well, is that, you know, what they're looking at now is kind of a basic medic service, and reality, the expectation that he has, and I think we all should have as citizens, is we get to that next level of a paramedic situation where they have more experience and a better ability to handle a situation they come across. I did have concerns raised to me, and I think, again, it comes down to communication, about the, the ability for our own fire personnel to get on to the airport property, and a necessity is they have to be met, they've got to go through, through security, and when you're dealing with seconds and minutes being very critical to the process of giving aid to the injured, that ongoing concern is certainly one that our citizens need to be at least knowing that that's not going to be happening to a, to a large extent. And I felt comfortable with DeKeff's explanation of that, though I'm still a bit uncomfortable with the fact of the number of personnel that's going to be there in fire medic safety. And again, the amount of protection it's going to take away from the rest of the city if the private contracted company who they're thinking about bringing on right now is hired, and they are very basically concerned with the problems with an actual airplane fire and the foaming of that airplane and the fire attention on that. And so, I kind of echo the concerns that I heard this morning about if we go as an airport with a private entity and they are limited in their scope, then do we really have the kind of fire protection and even more importantly, the medic protection that we as a city should have? Secondly, as I was looking and saw some things on budget for the Airport Authority, the next concern I have is that they're starting to reduce the number of police officers at the airport, too. And that the summary that I saw was in 2015, they'll be reducing two officers, and 2016, another two. When you're talking about only 22 officers or 21 officers to begin with, and you start knocking down two the first year, two the second year, and even with Mr. Hansel's report today, he's saying we have more and more visitors, to the point of 2.2 or 2.4 million visitors going through the airport, then you actually are having more people going through, and we're reducing the public safety factor of the airport. And so, there's a great concern amongst the number of the neighborhood people in relationship to, you know, are we being adequately covered by public safety, and is the airport going to be as safe as it has been in the past? Mr. Hansel gave the following quotes during his workshop this morning, and I will quote three of them. "Safety is our primary concern. We pick solutions that give maximum safety. Money is not the issue when it comes to safety." These are all said during the forum, and yet, it seems like, in the way of spending money, that's not happening. Now, I understand that this is an Airport Authority, and I understand the city council has very limited scope, is what they can do in a decision-making processing authority. Couple of years ago, I spoke against the authority for that very reason, is that it takes the public input out of the process. Once you decide who the five people are of the authority, then you have very little actual action that you can take to be able to change decisions that they make. And we lose, as a check and balance system that we have presently in our city council and board system. But what you can do, and I think that Mrs. Hensley actually brought it up, is you can force them to communicate a lot more what their plans are and how they're going to go about it, so that there's an interaction going in place. As a city council, if you don't feel that public safety in other areas are being done, you do have one final solution. You can get rid of the board members, the authority members. It seems to be the only solution that you would have. So I encourage you to force upon them these issues of public safety for the concern of the airport. It's just not money, it's public safety needs to be done, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Could we have a motion received?
I'll move, make a motion to receive and file the comments.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us, given the time, it's 5 o'clock, to our hearings. Item 36 is on the conveyance of property purchased for the Euclid Avenue Intersection Improvements Project to the State of Iowa for the benefit and use of the Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT. Is there anyone here to speak on that conveyance of the property for the Euclid Avenue Intersection Seeing no one, could we close the hearing and any discussion?
I'll make a comment or two. This is that by Warren Harding, Junior High Middle School up there in Heidel Park, and certainly will be a big help as far as the traffic in that up there if this can be passed. And if there's no other comments, I'll move item 36.
Seven yes.
All right. Item 37, a request from Quick Trip Doing Businesses as Tobacco Outlet Plus to rezone property at 3301 East Euclid Avenue from C1, Neighborhood Retail Commercial and FW Floodway to Limited C2, General Retail and Highway-Oriented Commercial Limited Floodway and Limited U2 Flood Plane. This item was continued from January 27 of '14. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant. Is there anybody here? above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant. Is there anybody here to speak to item 37, request from QuickTrip? Seeing none, let's close the hearing. Is there any discussion regarding this request, QuickTrip doing business as the Tobacco Outlet Plus?
I've talked to two neighborhoods on this, and one of them, it's a split. One's for it, and one is in opposition. The one farthest away is the opposition, and they're really not changing what they're selling, that they're maintaining the selling of wine and beer and no liquor, hard liquor to be sold here out of this location. So, if there's no other comments, I'd move 37 and 37A and B.
But continuing their tobacco sales, and didn't they say that it's going to be over, what'd they say, 50 or 60% is tobacco and alcohol?
It's going to be over, yeah. This is an exception, but it did get heavily approved at plan and zoning also.
Okay. Thank you.
Six yes, one no.
All right, for those watching, item 37A and B all passed. B needed six votes, which they got, so the waiver was requested by the applicant, and that will be the final consideration on this item. Item 38, on East Fourth Street at Walnut and Court Traffic Signal Installation, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc., Wayne Leslie, President, $334,398, Council Communication Number 14-048. A is the approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody here to speak on item 38, which is on the East Fourth Street and Walnut and Court Avenue Traffic Signal Installation? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing. And Carl, you want to?
I'll move adoption, please.
Got it.
38 and 38A. Been moved.
Six yes, one no.
All right, item 39 is on the Euclid Avenue Intersection Improvements at Cornell and Oxford Streets, resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Synergy Contracting LLC, Jesse Rogness, owner, president, for $1,246,336.77, Council Communication Number 14-46. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone here to speak to that Euclid Avenue Intersection Improvement? Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'd move 39 and 39A. And I told you wrong on 36. That was on East 14th and Euclid intersection there with DOT. This is the one by Warren Harding Middle School.
Right, it's been moved.
Seven yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings end at 5:07. Takes us back now to item 34, which Communication Report, this time from Brenda Walker, of 10:06, 44th Place, to speak regarding a regulation of wood burning stoves and hydronic heaters.
Hi.
Hi there.
Did you pass these out for me?
Thank you.
I'm here today because three years ago, we had a neighbor decide to heat their home with a wood burning stove. And we went from breathing the clean, fresh air of Des Moines that I've been breathing all my life to being forced to breathe toxic wood smoke every day, all winter, in our yard, in our home, and whenever we walk down the street. However you may feel about wood smoke, whether you like the way it smells or not, it is highly toxic, and it gets into your lungs and stays there and emits a wide array of carcinogenic chemicals. And when I looked for some sort of recourse to what my neighbor was doing, I found out that there is nothing currently in the city code regulating wood burning stoves or outdoor wood burners. The city of Des Moines defers to Pope County. Pope County air quality, the only regulations they have to go by are the EPA regulations. EPA regulations have to govern the entire country, which means rural areas, places where they don't have access to cleaner methods of heating their homes like we do in Des Moines. There are a couple of things that I would like to see you do. The first one is to look ahead into the future to a time, this is probably not a major problem now, although I know there are some people heating their homes with wood in Des Moines. Two things I think need to be done. There needs to be, you'd probably have to grandfather in the people that are already doing it, but there needs to be some kind of recourse for people who are having a problem with this. For example, there are all kinds of things in the city code that allow people to live in close proximity without inhibiting their neighbor's right to life and enjoyment of property. You can't burn trash in your yard. You can't burn leaves in your yard. You can't let your dogs run loose. We have come to an understanding that it's not fair to make people breathe secondhand tobacco smoke. But if your neighbor decides that he's going to heat his home with wood and takes your air quality from pristine to being forced to breathe toxic wood smoke every day, seven months out of the year, you have absolutely at the present time, no recourse whatsoever. And I am urgently asking you to fix this problem. What I think should happen is that, looking ahead, with the kind of cold winters that we're having now, and the fact that sooner or later, natural gas prices are going to go up. It could happen that more people in the city of Des Moines will decide to either buy a wood burning stove or an outdoor wood burner, which at the present time is not regulated by the EPA or anything else, and they produce these vast quantities of smoke. There's nothing in the city code preventing anyone from doing this at the present time. So, I would, I think it would be wise, if you want to protect air quality for future generations, to simply ban heating your home with wood. In other words, there are other mechanisms in place. If people are having trouble with their heating bills, nobody wants to see anybody freeze to death, but you can look at the Mid-American Energy website, Mid-American Energy, and there are federal and state agencies and nonprofit agencies that help people with their energy costs, that help people winterize their homes. It simply shouldn't be an option for anyone in Des Moines to heat their home at the expense of their neighbor's air quality. So, I'm asking you to do two things. Ban heating your home with wood, and put something in place, maybe an extension of the Odor Control Board, which at the present time does not deal with individuals, only deals with businesses, or some kind of a special board that people could come to if they're having a problem with this issue. So, I really hope that you'll act on this because I think it's really, it could become a much bigger issue in future. It is a big issue for a lot of communities in this country, and if you get ahead of it and just ban it right now, it will never become a problem in Des Moines, and I think that would be really smart because once people buy these things, it's going to be a lot harder to get rid of them. Finally, there's at least, it's Christine, is Jeremy here? Oh, is Jeremy here, Christine? Okay. There's two people in the audience. Christine Paulson is from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Air Quality, and Jeremy Becker is from Pope County Air Quality. And they would love, if anyone is interested, to give you a presentation on this topic, but they can't do it unless they're specifically requested to. So, that's why I gave you their contact information. So, if anyone's interested in getting more information, please contact them. They would love to give you a presentation. But just let me repeat, the only regulations they have to deal with now are EPA, and these are not strict enough for a densely populated urban area. And I'm begging you to do something about it. Thank you.
Brenda, thank you. If somebody would give the manager a direction, maybe we can get it on a workshop one of these days and listen to the air quality presentation by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and maybe Pope County.
I'll refer it back to the city manager for review and bringing back options and working with the different bodies listed at a workshop.
And, Mr. Manager, I think that what we kind of established over the past couple, three years is that the mayor pro tem will work with you on that work surrounding our workshop. So, Bob, if you'll kind of make sure that we get everything moving forward. Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
All right, from the Highland Park, Smith Board regarding their recommended budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014. Is anybody here from the Smith Board in Highland Park? Have we received a budget from them? All right, there's nobody here. Could somebody?
Community Development, didn't they meet with the Highland Park Business Group, Larry or somebody? I thought I saw that there was somebody from Community Development. No?
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to move receive and file a letter to the Department of
Okay. Bob? Mr. Coleman, thank you.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us to item 40, which is preliminary terms of agreement with 201 East Locust LLC for a $45 million project constructing 120-room hotel, 104 market rate residential units, and a minimum of 236 space parking garage at 201 East Locust Street, Council Communication Number 14-057. Is there anyone here to make any presentation or comments on that project?
Good evening, Troy Hanson with Hanson Real Estate in Johnston, 5665 Greendale Road. We're really looking forward to this project. It's been a long time in the works, and I think all the pieces are finally coming together here to make this thing happen. And I really wanted to thank staff and Rita and everybody's hard work to bring us to this point. So, happy to answer any other questions that you guys may have, but thanks again for considering this.
All right, and just, Mr. Manager, this request is for preliminary terms of agreement. Would you quickly make clear to all of us what we're doing? Obviously, the plan's going to have to come back, probably through P&amp;Z and other bodies, but...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is preliminary approval, which means we'll begin negotiations on a final contract, but all of that actually will have come back to you for your review of the specific terms and conditions of that deal. And of course, there's the review of the architecture and the plan that will go through the normal city review process culminating with council action as well. So, this is your first look at this. You'll have additional opportunities going forward, and we look forward to processing the request.
I'd like to move item 40, please.
Mr. Coleman, do you have a comment?
I support your motion. I do want to make one small comment. Thank you to the team at Hanson. He mentioned, you know, the pieces are coming together. I'm kind of proud that the council hasn't gone too fast at this parcel, that we've been patient, and there's been some other things that we haven't, you know, always felt the same about in terms of what might happen there or how we proceed. So, I think this is excellent, and I just compliment the developer, the team at Hanson. The one thing that I would like to say, not necessarily related to this, but as a downtown statement in general, we continue to have a lot of interest in hotels. And in particular, there's been a lot of talk. We're opening an extended stay hotel right now, just on the west side of the river, two blocks away, maybe three blocks away. And I'm just wondering, Manager, if there's a way, without spending a lot of money or doing other things, if you could consider or make a report to us on how we might go about just making sure that these projects that we're in essence a partner in with, you know, the city incentives, that we're not saturating the market. Obviously, this one's kind of the first in line of the next round, but there's many more coming after this of people talking, especially about extended stay hotels. And I know, I asked for a briefing and was joined by a couple colleagues, and I think as we kind of look from corner to corner of downtown, this is going to be in, you know, this is going to be a question for us as to how much money do we put into projects if there's, if the market's becoming saturated?
Mr. Mayor, I may.
Please.
Mr. Coleman, council member, a very appropriate point. This is an extended stay product. There are other projects downtown that have this kind of, and I think what you're alluding to is the fact that there are other proposals for extended stay hotels as well. What we would do is work with the CVB and our own staff and perhaps touch base with some outside resources as well and give you our evaluation of the market potential. Clearly, you don't want to over incent or over underwrite, if you will, projects of this nature if there's not sufficient demand. So, we'll do our best to get a handle on that issue and report that back to you when this comes back for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, just one other comment. You know, this is a significant project. I know just on the other side in Carl's Ward, but this is really significant. We're talking about a $45 million project. And I know this is a first step, and I just want to thank you and for your investment in the downtown, particularly East Village, because you've done quite a bit of other, quite a few other things in East Village. So, this is a great, great project, significant investment. I know you've got to go through and negotiate it, but I'm excited to see this development as well.
Okay, any other comments?
Seven yes?
All right, we'll look forward to that, Troy. We have three extra items this evening. These are items that were filed after 5:00 PM on Wednesday preceding our city council meeting, which either a council member or the mayor or a letter from the city manager or department tractor can be placed on our agenda. The first item this evening is the setting date of hearing on a request from QuickTrip Corporation to rezone property in the vicinity of 2930, 2934, and 2936 Walker Street from R161 Family Low Density Residential to Limited C2 General Retail and Highway Oriented Commercial to allow redevelopment and expansion of the existing gas station convenience store. And that hearing would be held on the 24th day of February of 2014. The sponsor is council member Boss. Carl, would you have anything to follow up on that?
I don't know if there are members here from QuickTrip to speak to that, but this is just a...
We're just setting that.
Set a hearing date.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right. So, Carl's motion is to set that date of hearing, which is the 14th through the 24th of February.
Seven yes?
Item two on the extra items is an approval by ballot of the appointment of a council member to serve at the Ward Four Objection Hearing per Iowa Code, Section 44.8, and I sponsored this item. We mentioned this morning at our council workshop that there has been a, an appeal contesting the, one of the candidates in that Ward Four race. We are going to have a hearing. The law provides for the city clerk, the mayor, and one of our council members to serve on that board to consider that objection. So, I guess I would throw it open to our council. Does anybody have any comments or ideas regarding, first of all, maybe there's somebody that wants to serve on this board, and I'd like to hear about that. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe due to the fact that I have donated to one of the two candidates, whether it's an actual or perceived conflict, I want my name withdrawn from any consideration on this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Moore, yes?
I would like to recuse myself as well, and I would hope that other members of the council or the elective body would do likewise if they've had any connection with either of the candidates. I just think that that's the fairest way to go. I just think that that's the fairest way to go about it.
Anybody else?
I'll make a contribution right now if it gets me out of it.
Sorry, you're late.
Anybody else have any other comments? I think that it's interesting, we, these folks often are, anybody who's attended a neighborhood meeting or a city council meeting or has eaten out or been around, I think probably has had contact with one or more of these candidates. And so I, while I certainly respect what Mrs. Hensley said, I think unfortunately that would disqualify probably everybody sitting in here. So does anybody have any interest in serving on this, this board to consider this challenge? And I guess I would throw that open first. And we have at least two people that are out, and Mr. Coleman's going to make multiple donations, so he would like to be out as well. But nevertheless, if there aren't any, what we would do is, I understand that, Mr. Attorney, is we have a ballot that has been placed in front of us, and we are to fill in our name, and then we are to check one of these council members to, to serve with the mayor and the city clerk on this commission or board, if you will.
That is correct, and the vote will be tabulated and announced by the city clerk after the ballots are received. And there are more ballots in case there's not someone who gets a sufficient number votes on the first ballot. The ballot requirement is a statutory requirement out of Section 44.8.
Did I talk about you?
All right. I would suggest, without any other note, that we go ahead and do that then at this time.
Are you taking any questions or...
Well, this, as I understand it, I guess my response to that is that we, by Iowa Code, Section 44.8 are required to, A, put the board together, and B, select a third member to serve on this. That's the only thing that we're doing this evening. We are going to, just for notice, everybody that's sitting here that may have an interest in this item, we are going to have a hearing tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. on this item, at which time we will hear the arguments on, on this challenge. And we will make a decision, hopefully that will be possible after that presentation of, of information to, to the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, for clarification purposes? Tomorrow, when, I think the meeting is scheduled at 3:00, that's a public meeting, but it was my understanding that there would not be any public discussion allowed. It would only be amongst the committee. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is a hearing. It is a hearing that is open to the public, but it's not a public participatory hearing.
So is it appropriate then to have public participation tonight on this, as a result of this item?
It's entirely up to the council if they want to receive public comment.
Well, if they don't do it tonight, they can't do it tomorrow.
Well, they can't consider any public comment. The only thing that the council, that the board can consider is what's presented to the board tomorrow. So it wouldn't be appropriate, if the desire is to sway the board one way or the other, that wouldn't be appropriate for comment this evening either. Only if they have comment potentially about something, some other issue that's germane to this topic. But, but any input needs to come from the objector or the candidate in the process that we put together.
So there's no opportunity then for the public to weigh in, is really what's being said?
That, it's a hearing on the objection that has been...
I understand that, but the public is not being allowed to participate tomorrow.
It's like, it's like, I guess the best analogy would be like a trial. The public doesn't have a right to come down and participate in a criminal trial, even if it's a high-profile criminal or civil trial, just as a member of the public. They can come down, they can observe, certainly, but they...
But the other option would be to allow them to have input, even though it cannot be used in the hearing tomorrow, to have input tonight, but it cannot be used in the hearing tomorrow.
Whatever input that might be, yes, ma'am, if that's, will the council, certainly.
Just wanted to make sure.
Can I ask a specific question, just because your answer confuses me a little bit? The committee may want, may request documentation or testimony? That's up to the committee?
Sure.
Okay. Sure.
And how much time will they have? I mean, there may not be, that information may not be readily available at the time of the hearing tomorrow. So what would be the likely time allowed for that?
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
Well, so one of the, you know, they ask for proof, documentation, you know, whatever those items might be. I mean, you know, there's a whole list of things you could probably go through, and maybe they're only prepared and only have five or six of 10 items that is being requested by the committee. How much time do they have to make that available?
The statute, the statute is absolutely nondescript on the nature of the hearing. So we're trying to put together a process that will satisfy due, due process requirements. That, I think, will be up to the board in terms of the type of, all of the types of information they want to receive. Certainly witnesses, any testimony, they want to receive, any documentation that's offered by the objector or by the candidate would also be appropriate. I don't know that there's a specific time if the board, certainly if there's a description made or a plea made to the board for additional information or additional time, that's going to be in the discretion of the board, keeping in mind, of course, that we have an election that's coming very shortly and that, it's my understanding, the auditor was prepared to print ballots today but has waited on that, but they need to get the ballots printed at some point, so there will need to be a decision by the board.
But the committee needs to make a decision within seven days, correct?
Actually, that's, that is not specified in the Section 44.8. That's elsewhere in the code, but not actually in 44.8.
Mr. Attorney, I guess since we're asking a couple of legal questions and you're our authority here, wouldn't any information that we would receive from the general public tonight, prior to announcement or selection of whoever it is that's going to serve on this, plus the city clerk and I, I mean, almost feel like I'd have to remove myself from this discussion to let the general public hand out information that may be prejudiced one way or another?
Again, this is, this, the hearing process that's contemplated under Section 44.8 is, is not contemplated as a general public provision of information, as would be, say, a hearing on whether or not to proceed with construction. The board sits at least in a quasi-adjudicative position. That means there has to be due process. That means there can't be ex parte communications. That means that the board has to have on the record what it is that it's going to consider. So if there are a number of items that are provided that are, for whatever reason, inappropriate or outside of what should be provided for the record, that could create a problem. Yes, sir.
Well, but aren't we going to get the factual information from the representatives of the, the contestants on either side of this issue in our, our hearing tomorrow?
I don't know what we will receive. They will, there will be...
I mean, isn't that the purpose of the...
That's the purpose. There will be an opportunity for both sides to provide whatever information they wish to provide and provide whatever additional witnesses they wish to provide.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
There is no public, there is no public participation, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment that's directly germane only to the selection process, and I would request to be heard.
Go ahead.
My name is Gary Dickey. I live at 3201 Watrous. I'm here from Dickey and Campbell Law Firm, 301 East Walnut, on behalf of the Citizens for Joe Gatto campaign. I would just bring, Mr. Mayor, to your attention that, that the opposing candidate, Joe Henry, represents on his professional website for his, for his Coldwell Banking Realty, that he's managed several successful city council campaigns in Des Moines, including Mayor Frank County's. I bring that to your attention, perhaps for either council discussion or for you to reconsider perhaps your position. I know the statute's clear that it's the mayor, the clerk, and another council person. It's not clear as to what would happen if you had a conflict. The concern that we have...
I'd want to just answer that directly. I, that is true. I also have eaten, I would say dozens of times at Baratas and have known Mr. Gatto for a long time. I don't believe that disqualifies from me unless you think that the quality of his food wasn't up to the...
Well, no, the concern is, I mean, you know, they're, they're disqual, they're recusing themselves based on a monetary contribution, as far as I understand from their comments. I mean, if, if Mr. Henry was indeed your campaign manager, that would be a significant in-kind contribution in whatever services he provided. The concern that we would have then is, is I don't see Mr. Henry here. We would ask for an opportunity to make a record tomorrow, certainly what the case law says, that in certiorari-type actions from quasi-adjudicative tribunals, that it's implicit that it's a conflict-free, that, you know, review board. And so we would need to have an opportunity either before 3:00 or at the beginning of the agenda to, and we're, we're really kind of hamstrung because we don't have subpoena power, as far as I can tell, to compel Mr. Henry to testify concerning just the scope of services and relationship that he has with you. And it puts us in a very uncomfortable position of having to ask you questions further about the nature of his campaign management services. So in light of that, we would ask that you reconsider serving on the board, and I don't know if that means it devolves to the mayor pro temp or if you vote by secret ballot for a third member. Alternatively, we would ask for additional time, either before or, or at the top of the agenda item tomorrow, to make a record on the contacts between you and Mr. Henry.
Frank?
Yes.
You know, I don't think that has any bearing at all, how you served each other. I think it's going to be facts. You'll, you have to find out what the facts are, addresses and things of that nature. But I don't think that that has a bearing on it as far as whether or not somebody has worked together.
Okay. Very well. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Do you have any?
Ready to read? Ready to read? Mayor County chooses Chris Coleman. Christine Hensley chooses Bob Mahaffey. Carl Voss chooses Bill Gray. Bob Mahaffey chooses Chris Coleman. Skip Moore chooses Bill Gray. And Bill Gray chooses Bob Mahaffey.
So I believe Bob Mahaffey has received three votes.
Three votes.
Everybody else received two.
Chris, did you call Shane?
Not yet.
I, I will, I will say, I will say this. Mr. Mahaffey received my vote as Diane Redd as mayor pro temp, and I think he will bring a clear head to this, not representing the area and not having any kind of political or, or, or other concerns. And I think he'll do a great job. I also want to reinforce what Councilman Mahaffey, mayor pro temp, said about the mayor. I have, I have confidence that he'll approach this with objectivity as well.
You have a motion on extra two? And a motion on extra item two?
Yes, a motion on extra item two to, in the rule call that approves, vote for Bob Mahaffey by ballot.
I'll, I'll move to appoint through the balloting process Councilman Mahaffey and to convene the committee tomorrow.
And I believe that that, that hearing will be in, in this, in this room, in the council chamber.
3:00.
3:00.
All right. Item three is approving an offer of judgment to John Jacob Tumbly in his pending lawsuit against the city of Des Moines and senior police officer Cody Grimes, $75,000. Sponsor is the mayor. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
No, I don't have Dickey.
I'll move extra item number three.
Mrs. Hensley? Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes.
Could we now have a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene as board of health?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We now sit as the board of health. Item one on the board of health is the legal department to proceed with a court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at 1114 10th Street. It's a main structure. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
Aye.
Main structure at 1114 10th Street. Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. Item two is a notification from Shelter Insurance Companies dated January 20th, 2014, stating their insured Stephen Okennis of 1540 East 36th Street, who sustained a fire loss, and they are holding a fire escrow demolition reserve. Is anybody here to speak to that notification, Garden &amp; Property at 1540 East 36th Street? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. And if we could have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
More reading material.